... education meeting in order. Please stand to the right of the podium. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome everyone, thanks for talking. We'll start the meeting with approval of the agenda. I move that we approve the agenda with the following amendments. Additional certified and classified personnel action, item number two three. Motion by Laura.
Second.
Second by Allen, seeing discussion. All those in favor, signal by raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay. Public comments. Our board member-elect Jennifer Stanley would like to visit with us on the new curriculum.
Hi Jennifer.
Hello. I see it's not on the agenda for tonight, but I thought I'd go ahead and talk to you about it. Tonight I'm here as a parent with kids in the school district and I wanted to just express my concern again about the Engage New York math curriculum. I hope you kind of take these comments into consideration when you do finally make your decisions on the math curriculum. I have personally witnessed the struggles that this, my kids have had and some other students with the homework and some of the stuff not meshing well. And I've visited with parents and teachers who also feel concerned sometimes. I know teachers struggle with saying they don't like something because that's their job and they feel like they need to like that even though maybe it's not necessarily working how they want it to be. And I even served on the math committee and I've read the report that was put together. And there was a lot of data there that, you look at it one way and it supports that it's really helping our kids and all this, but sometimes that stuff can be presented in a way that it makes it inconclusive. And I really felt that all we're doing right now is focusing on the data, focusing on the data. There were comments in there from teachers and from parents that I really, I think that needs to be the focus. And there were a lot of concerns in those comments and I felt like they were getting pushed aside. And I, and I just, I keep hearing that we have to align at the common core and I know that we need to do that. That comes from the government and that's where our money comes from, but really we always talk about putting the kids first and if it's not what's best for the kids are we really putting the kids first? And I, this curriculum from what I've seen, I don't think it teaches the basics. We're wanting to make them critical thinkers and help them learn to figure things out, but you gotta let the, be, also be able to be quick thinkers and know those math facts and know those basics before they are thrown into figuring out those big life problems. And I don't think this curriculum does that. I really think it skips over that and it's left a lot of gaps for our kids. I know that that's been brought up a lot. And just because it's common core aligned does not mean that it's what's best for our kids. I know that we're, we want to be a model school and show that we're working towards that, but I don't know. I'm worried, I'm worried for our kids that maybe we're not allowing the teachers to have those teachable moments and letting our kids discover that because we're so worried about them doing all of those assessments. So, I just, I know you'd probably get tired of me saying that over and over again, but I'm gonna keep fighting for that as much as I can. So, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for sharing. Okay, we're gonna go right into the recognition this evening. We're gonna change the order up a little bit. Jane Vanderhoff needs to go first, so we are gonna move recognition of the high school choir students up to the top of the list. Hello.
Hi.
Are you ready?
We are ready. Come in guys. Thank you for inviting us this evening. My name is Jane Vanderhoff and my teaching partner is Misty Baldwin. We team teach the classes at the high school and we are very proud to highlight our hard working and dedicated students. They have risen to the challenge this year and exceeded our expectations as they always do. In the fall, about 2,600 students across Kansas tried out for district and state choir. 256 were chosen and eight of them are from Garden City High School. And it's the highest level they can reach as far as being in an all-state choir and we're very proud of them. They performed on March 1st at Century 2 and got two standing ovations, not just one but two. It was amazing. And if you will wave when I call your name.
Hey Jane, before you get started, let's bring everybody in, maybe do two rows.
Sure.
The taller gentleman in the back and bring some of the, I just want to make sure everybody gets in the room.
State people come forward then and we'll trade rows.
There you go.
Thank you. That works, thank you.
Yeah.
The, our state people that are here this evening, there were eight and two alternates. The ones that are here this evening are Bailey Almas, Dakota Brungart, Columbia Martinez, Mario Ortega, Michael Partridge, and Erica Ramos.
And he is an alternate.
He was an alternate before. We were hoping for an injury of some sort or sickness. Leading up to all-state, but it didn't happen, he was backpacked. Sometimes we get lucky, he's hoping, he's a junior, so there's hope for next year. So, that's how that goes. They sweated out, Mario sweated it out the year before and was hoping for his turn. If they're in all-state all three years, they get to wear a medal at the closing concert and get all kinds of scholarship offers and it's a high achievement for them. And so, if you will, the next group, some of you stay up here. The next event we had was solo and ensemble contest. They had regionals at the beginning of April. If they receive a one rating, they qualify for state, which was on the 24th of April and we went to Lawrence. It's all 6A when they go to state. We compete against only our compatriots of the 6A world. And we had 18 students out of 22 that qualified for state. And if we get a one at state, we're happy and we have five soloists that made a one at state. And the ones that are here this evening are Dakota Brungart, Mario Ortega, Memphis Palacios, you in the front row, and Michael Partridge. Then we had five ensembles and four of them made ones. We let the freshmen at home, we're trying to make that work out well for us budget-wise, space-wise, and behavior-wise. It's kind of gonna be an honor for them to go to state. So, we made the decision this year just to take our upperclassmen to state, but the freshmen did get a one. Mrs. Baldwin and I work closely with those ensembles and I'm gonna let her, if you guys will shift to the back row and the sophomores step up. Mrs. Baldwin, will you introduce your sophomore girls ensemble that received a one at state?
So, Jane and I switch off. In freshman choir, which I teach, she does the ensemble, but in sophomore choir, Le Chantay, she teaches that, so I do the ensemble. And so, we had 13 girls that were in the ensemble. This is actually their second year, most of them, to get to go to state as an ensemble and they received a one at state last year also. So, this is two years in a row for these girls. But this is Madison Knoll, Haley Knight, Ebony Cervantes, Pail Rodriguez, and Madison Adler.
Then we had one other ensemble that received a one rating and Will the Ten Tones. We had a group of upperclassmen that wanted to work together in our applied music class just to experience all kinds of music and they put together an ensemble for contest. We've been the Tentacles, we've been the Ten Tones, we've been the ten ensemble, we've been the tennis shoes, we've been all kinds of things. The ones that are here this evening are Rafael Diaz, Columbia Martinez, Mario Ortega, Memphis Palacios, Michael Partridge, and Maggie Unruh. If you would like to hear these, it's an, the honor that they earn is if they get a one at state, they get to perform at the spring concert and that will be on Thursday. So, if you would like to hear more, come to the orchestra concert tomorrow night and the choir concert on Thursday and the show choir has its own showcase next Tuesday. So, this is our busy season and then we will be getting on the bus at 4:00 AM Friday morning and acapella will go to Elitch Gardens in Denver for a performance trip too. So, these kids, you've probably seen them over and over this year because they're in everything. They're awesome. They split their time wisely, they achieve at everything they do and we're so proud of these kids. They're fantastic. And we also want to thank Dr. Atha and Dr. Dennis and Mr. Morelles who have been so supportive of everything we've done and we're thrilled that Dr. Carlin and Mr. Norby will take their place because it'll be very smooth changeover because they understand and value what we're doing and thanks to them and thanks to you and thanks to our kids.
Thank you Jane. I know it's gonna put you on the spot, but can you give us any little musical treat before you go? Not too difficult?
I don't think so.
Something would be great.
Can you sing?
We don't have a soprano.
We don't have a soprano. Wish we'd known.
That's alright.
See you Thursday.
Alright. I got shut down. I was saying, yeah.
Yes, they want to know if they can sing a little bit of the Irish Blessing.
Yes.
Alright.
Can you do the part, the, the, this is our traditional song, we close the air with where mother cries and everyone hugs their friends. A G?
A G?
Or a D, either one. We're versatile. Ready? Guys, we're starting at the mix part. Ready, go.
May the road rise to meet you. May the wind be ever at your back. May the sunshine warm upon your face and the rain fall soft upon your fields. And until we meet again. May God hold you, ever in the palm of his hand.
Wow.
I know, the choir is such a tough act to follow. It's hard, I'm used to being in her shadow, so she taught me everything I know. I have my fancy speech here on the napkin.
Well, let's hear it.
So, the orchestra is 120 strong at the high school this year. We got, um, thank you. We had district orchestra in December and we had around 30 students in the district orchestra and we combined with, there's only three orchestras in southwest Kansas. Garden City, Dodge City, and Great Bend. So, we also combined with the two in the northwest district, Hayes and Beloit. And we had an orchestra of about 70 and 30 of those were Garden City students. So, that's because I make them do it because I think it's good for them. So, that was pretty exciting. That's how we started off our year. We took 22 solos to Dodge for solo contest and of those, 12 got ones. And so, we took Haley Dugard, Tia Dunsworth, Jesse Johannis, Bernard Altamorana, Sir Dennis, Rafael Diaz, Curtis Wedle, Brandon Smith, Daniel Carrasco, and Eric Martinez were the ones that went to state. And of those, six of those got ones, which has never happened before. So, we were super excited about that. So, just give these guys a hand. Have anything to add?
I want to know what you play and your history on playing.
Tell them, tell them your name and what grade you're in and what you play.
Hi, I'm Sir Dennis. I, uh, oh yeah, I'm a junior. Forgot about that. I play, I played violin and...
Well, he's also in the band, he plays trumpet.
Yeah, I play trumpet in the band.
I get to share him.
I'm Tia Dunsworth. I'm a freshman and I play the instrument that comes with the body bag.
I'm Haley Dugard. I'm a sophomore and I play the cello.
My name is Eric Martinez. I'm a graduating senior. I play the violin.
I'm Rafael Diaz, you saw me with the choir. And I play cello. Oh, I'm a junior as well.
Well, thank you guys.
Thank you for having us tonight. Thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Hey.
I know, no, we already have, I just need to find out how much. Hey Josh.
I'm not important.
Josh, I shook it because I know.
Here, come this way. Don't stand behind me. Emily's worried because she just got off work, will you please tell her that she's okay?
She's not. So cute.
Okay. Thanks Zach.
Let's talk tomorrow about faster driving. I'm Lyle Phillips, I'm the director of bands at the high school. A quick synopsis of our year. We marched at three festivals in the fall and October. Band received straight ones in all three festivals. It's the first time a marching band has done that, at least in my three years. We marched 156 this fall, which is a great number and a fabulous band to put together. We had a number of students audition for our district honor jazz band and we actually filled over half of the slots for our district honor jazz band for southwest Kansas with a lot of really good kids. And then we also put roughly 25 kids into our district honor band. That happened in December. If the students made either the district honor band or the district jazz band, that opened up the ability for them to go to state live auditions in Selina in January. So, we hauled a good number of kids up. We had 26 auditions that can only audition if they're a sophomore, junior, or a senior. If you take the entire state of Kansas and divide it into half, so a western half and an eastern half, there were 18 kids total selected to perform either with a 1, 2, 3, 4A honor band, the 5, 6A honor band, the jazz band, or the orchestra. The kids who auditioned for us were either eligible to compete or perform with the 5A, 6A honor band, or the jazz band, or the orchestra. We had three of the 18 kids who were selected to perform in those four groups from the western half of the state. So, I want to start with the introduction of them. We have sophomore Emily Unruh on horn, sophomore Zach George on trombone, and senior clarinet Ani Madell. And I think that we need to give them a round of applause. In the same way as the choir and the orchestra, we compete at regional solo small ensemble in Dodge City earlier, earlier in April. Any kids that receive ones at that event are eligible to go and compete at the state level. We took 37 events and we ended up with 13 events choosing to go on to compete at the state level. We drove up to Lawrence and did that. We took two ensembles. Our brass choir was a point away from a one, played very, very well. But we had a clarinet trio that also played very well and did receive a one. Two of the three members are here. The third one is a new student to our district, her name is Jasmine Eleanor and she's gonna make it this evening. The other two clarinets that competed in that trio was a freshman, a freshman and clarinet and again, senior clarinet, Ani Madell. So, a round of applause for those two. And then the, the band judging was rough. It was rough this year at regionals, it was rough again at state. We had two students who would walk in and played with a lot of poise and a lot of character to themselves and they received a one on their solos. And so, we wanted to come and introduce them to you as well. Again, senior clarinet, Ani Madell, and senior bassoon, Maggie Unruh, who we've already seen with the orchestra. So, that's been kind of the band year in a nutshell, so, I mean, we get a round of applause for all of you. Do any of you have questions for our students?
Anna, Ani Madell, are you planning to play next year or once you graduate?
Yes, I am.
Where are you gonna play at?
Um, I'm still undecided. I'm still like thinking about Hayes, but if that doesn't work out then I might have to stay here a year, so.
Well, we'd be happy to have you another year in the community, so congratulations to all of you. Good job. Come on through, we'd like to see you. Grab a pen if you mind. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Well, uh... You're not a freshman, you're a sophomore, right? Yeah. Thank you. Vanderhoff, you are up.
Alright, well, this is just a small sampling size of our, of the Buffalo Broadcasting System, the staff and crew if you will. All these individuals have done a great job this year in building our program up to where it is today. But we're here to recognize for the Kansas Association of Broadcast Awards that they won back in March. And they got their awards in April. Some people who won, this is Mickey Bridges, he won for second place in 30, or 62nd PSA along with Josh Ursick. Let's see, in that same category, Devita De Leon, right there, won for state champion in 62nd PSA. She also won for 32nd PSA, she was a state runner-up. Some other people who are here, Abigail Janess Doherty, she won for a complete taped newscast for radio. Additionally, see who else is here. We have a lot of people involved in other, like lots of school activities. Abigail's lucky enough to get out of swimming to be here, so.
There's someone.
Sportscast, Juan, Juan Maldonado over there, part of our budding sports program that we've have over there. And he was state champion in a radio sportscast. Additionally, yeah. For, he was also the state champion in entertainment program, which is kind of a point of pride for him, because he started, when he's got a lot of local recognition for this show called Whammy Entertainment, which is running on BBS TV probably right now, I don't know. But yeah, it's a pretty popular program with the students at the high school and with the community. Devita also won for a documentary she did, which is, this is a category that we rarely enter. In this particular category, we swept it, first, second, and honorable mention. She won for a tribute to Miranda Dunsworth who had died three years ago. Additionally, Josh and Mickey won for station promo in TV. It's a really cool graphic, which is on 21, it runs pretty continuously. Additionally, okay, Rafael Diaz, he is state champion in 32nd PSA. And additionally, another point of pride for us is, this year we decided to enter the Imagine competition, which is Kansas City only-based program where it's some of the best digital arts in the Kansas City community. It's put on by the Northwest. And this is the first time we've ever entered and he won third place in PSA. That's pretty prideful for us, so we're, you know, showing those Kansas City schools that we're not just a bunch of hayseeds out here. And yeah, I think that that covers everybody who's here. Additionally, these people put on, put together a lot of work. Mickey is one of our crack news reporters, he's our weatherman every day. Abigail has helped continuously with a lot of our sporting events, which this is the first year that we've had the opportunity to stream our sports live, so we've done that. And Devita's also helped out, she helped stream the Rocky Walton. Juan has been a big integral part of creating our entertainment program. Haley's done a ton of stuff this year. She's filmed most of the football games that she saw on 21 this year. Rafael's been a big part, he, you know, won those two awards that we talked about. Josh Rors is here filming the award meeting.
Rafael, what was your PSA on?
Uh, it was drinking and driving and it was a stop ocean film.
Just film on YouTube if you want to check it out.
Okay, sounds great. And can you give us a little bit more on what the whammy update is about? Is it Board of Education approved?
Oh yeah.
That's the key to the project. So, what kind of entertainment is it? Just busting up and scoring on?
Sports entertainment mostly. Recently, we've added the gossip corner with the girls and...
Oh no, God, that's dangerous.
And we have a movie review, which Cooper Livermore usually helps out with, and just a weekly movie review that he'll watch. And we focus entertainment-y.
And the episode that they've won was actually done with puppets. Again, it's on YouTube, check it out.
While I've got a captive audience here, I have heard that the Board of Education meetings, which are so popular to watch on television, I know people are just dying to hear what happens at these meetings, but the audio isn't heard when it's on, when it's...
It's muffled.
Yeah, so, I don't know if that's something we can fix easily.
We've got, we've got this mic for that specific purpose, so I guess you guys just gotta talk louder. No, I, I, there's no, I mean, we have to mic you guys all and then, that's part of the issue is that, I don't know. We're trying to boost it as much as possible.
Those people should just come to the meeting.
They should, because yeah, when I get the, the edit, I boost the audio all the way, so.
Okay. Well, I don't want to wear a mic, so I think we're gonna have to stay muffled.
Yeah, definitely. Laura, what do you think of that guy?
Anyway, congratulations. Good job. Got all the recognition stuff?
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we're ready for the consent agenda. And my president moves that we approve the consent agenda as previously amended. Motion by Laura, second my thoughts, seeing discussion. All those in favor, signal by raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay, we are up to curriculum reports. Yay, iPad update, one of my favorites. Roxy, who's, Dr. Norby, or Steve Norby, sorry.
Well, we've actually got two presentations tonight from the high school. The first one will focus on our academies and, and an initiative we recently undertook with our academies. And then the second one will be an iPad update by Ms. Scott, so. Mrs. Jarmer will take the first one and while she's setting up, I'll just do an introduction for, can we get the projector? Okay. Well, at Garden City High School, just being an academy-based institution, we know that one of our goals every year has to be to expand and enhance our relationship with local business communities and our education partners and higher education with the community college. And recently, last Thursday, we undertook an effort to expand and enhance those relationships and get the conversation started to see, you know, what kind of services our local business community and our education partners...
I have a couple of handouts I just want to show you.